Regularly scheduled meeting for July 13, 2017 to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see. First on the agenda is announcements. Have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, yes, we do. We have three changes. The first is item seven, PDPI-16-19ZG, Cornerstone of Florida Inc., Cornerstone, revised stipulation A.3, delete stipulation A.8, and revised recommendation motion, which is attached. Item number eight, ordinance 17-32 Northwest Sector DRI 2026, to be continued to no date set and readvertised. And item number nine, PMU-05-19GR8 Northwest Sector, to be continued, no date set and readvertised.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes from the county attorney's office?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right. We have an item on the agenda that's for time certain at nine o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and go to item number one of the scheduled agenda. So that item is the updated school, 2017 updated school impact fees. So who's presenting that?
We are going to get him on the phone.
Okay.
Hello?
Carson, hey, it's Dwayne. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I thought there was another item in front of us.
I guess not. We're going to do this first.
Okay. Hold on.
So let me give some background while Carson's getting ready. I'm Dwayne Guthrie, the new school impact fee.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Carson?
Yeah, I can.
Good. I'm Dwayne Guthrie, the new school impact fee administrator for the county or manager for the county. We're here to do an update of the impact fees. It hasn't been that long since the school impact fees were last updated, which was in 2015, but after that, the voters approved an extension to the sales tax. And because that was a significant additional revenue source, the school board felt like they needed to go back and look and update their study because it might affect some of the credits and those kind of calculations. So they retained Tischler-Bice. Carson Bice is on the phone. He's the president of the company. He'll be making the presentation. Unfortunately, due to all the travel issues yesterday with weather and all, he ended up in Miami, and they canceled his early flight here, so he's going to have to do it over the phone. Mr. Clegg advises that since this is a legislative, mad or not quasi-judicial, that it would be okay for him to do that.
Correct.
So Carson, we will put your slides up, and you'll just have to tell me when it's time. And John Osborne has some words before we start.
Just the only word I have is just correct your title, Dwayne. You're the Manatee County Government's Impact Fee Administrator, not the school boards.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I didn't know that I said that. Excuse me. Yes, that's very clear. We do have a school board staff member here, the chief operating officer, Sandra Ford, and she can answer questions for staff. She also has paper copies of the presentation if anybody wants one, but I believe everybody has already seen as the backup materials and the agenda items, so.
And for clarification, this is a presentation for information purposes only. There's no expected vote?
No, that's not correct. We do ask the planning commission to, there is a recommended motion to find the ordinance and study consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. This is not a Land Development Code amendment. It's not strictly required by statute that the planning commission make a consistency finding, but we've always done that because there is a lot in our comprehensive plan that deals with school concurrency, the capital improvements element for schools, and the whole concept of providing the infrastructure to support growth. So because the comprehensive plan talks a lot about those issues, we feel like the safe and prudent thing to do is to bring school impact fee changes to the planning commission for review and a recommendation.
And also for clarification, this is a, the school impact fee, for lack of a better description, program is put together by the school board and presented to Manatee County?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll put up the slides, and then Carson, you can start. Let me give us a second.
Okay.
Okay, Carson, we're on the cover page. You want to start with that, or do you want to go to the second slide?
Yeah, you can flip to the next page. But first of all, I really appreciate you guys facilitating this. I mean, I've been doing this kind of work for 20 years, and this is the first time I've missed a public hearing. It seemed like every route I took from Chicago, and I ended up in Miami and was supposed to fly in last night, it's like the weather followed me around the Midwest and to the South and could never make it there. So I really appreciate this. As Dwayne mentioned, you know, when he sort of stepped the stage, the impetus for this update was primarily the passing of the new increment of, or the renewing of the sales tax. So that's a big component of this update. But also, there were some other things that were updated, including better data on construction costs based on recent estimates in construction that's ongoing. There's also been a shift in needs of school seats since the last study, some more clarity on exactly what's going to be done. And so all of that's reflected in this update. And as you can see from this slide, the school impact fee has the following cost components. The first is the actual bricks and mortar construction of additional classroom space. There's a land component. There's a component for buses, a component for furnitures and fixtures, and a component for portables. Next slide shows at the top a projection made by us using the official How Will We Grow residential projections prepared by the county as part of the How Will We Grow effort. And we applied that to the pupil generation rates used in the study to estimate how many additional public school age children would be generated over the next 10 years, which you can see totals little over 6,000, okay? And these projections indicate a need for more student seats than what is currently planned by Manatee County schools. And the last note for this slide is if the school board were to do nothing over the next 10 years and not add any additional capacity at all, the capacity levels or school utilization 10 years from now would be, at the elementary level, we'd see capacity at 110%. At the middle school level, it'd be 96%. And at the high school level, it would be 118%. On the next slide, you will see the planned five-year construction. As you can see, the subtotal there for elementary, there's an additional 1,323 student stations planned at the elementary level. Some of these are additions. And then there's one new elementary school. At the middle school level, there's a new middle school planned, and that has an additional 1,154 seats. And then at the high school level, there's a new high school planned plus an addition at Lakewood, which would add 2,200 seats for a total of 4,677. And if you recall from the previous chart, we're projecting 6,000 students over 10 years, and the school board at this point is planning 4,600, almost 4,700 seats over a five-year We mentioned credits earlier on, which is on the next slide, and so we revisited this, particularly given the fact that the sales tax has been renewed. And there's essentially three credit components. One is at the top, the credit given for future contributions to existing debt service principles. So that's in the form of the certificates of participation, as well as the sales tax revenue bond. Also, credit was given for future sales tax revenue not used to retire the sales tax bonded debt. So essentially, you're getting 100% credit for sales tax, even though 100% of the sales tax money is not likely to be spent on strictly capacity. Credit is also given for the future capital outlay millage that's not used to retire certificates of participation. So again, you're getting, you know, it's a conservative credit methodology that can be argued gives more credit than what is legally required. Next slide is the summary of the fees, and you can see here that at the single-family level, the total rate is $5,127. The townhouse duplex units, which generates slightly more children in Manatee County than single-family, has a fee of $6,471. The multifamily fee is $3,502, and then the manufactured home is $1,971. So the final slide compares the proposed fee to the current maximum, which is basically a decrease of $348. There's a decrease of $377 at the townhome duplex level, a decrease of $23 at the multifamily level, and then an increase of $493 at the manufactured home. And when you compare that to what is currently collected, it's a $1,271 increase for single-family, $1,335 at the townhome duplex level, $858 for multifamily, and $862 for manufactured homes. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the technical report.
Carson, let me just perhaps give a little context for the planning commissioners. When the fees were passed in 2015, they were phased in. And so that's why we're in the middle of that phase-in process. We haven't gotten to the 100% level. So that's why we have the two tables there before you of what we're currently collecting versus what the fees would be next April if nothing, if there was no change.
Okay.
Right. Thank you for that clarification, Dwayne, because I was a bit confused with the phase-in. But essentially, the $6,475 amount you see at the top of the table for single-family was the maximum fee calculated by our study in 2015.
What does it mean, maximum? Is it?
The maximum justifiable, meaning that you couldn't legally go above that fee because it's not justified.
Okay. And then with regard to?
Through the assumptions and methodologies.
With regard to the unit types, are these unit types consistent with the other, the Manatee County impact fee categories?
Do you want me to answer that, Carson, or you got it?
Well, you can jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, they're consistent with the categories. The difference for single-family, and I think you guys do this with townhomes also, Dwayne, is that they're by size of unit.
Yeah. Well, Manatee County's fees are by unit size. We do not differentiate by type. And so what you usually have is the apartments and mobile homes are smaller, so they tend to be at the bottom end of the Manatee County range. And then as you get larger townhomes, they're more mid-range, and then single detached tends to be larger units. So we do not differentiate by type. We just do it by size. But this is the way the school fees are done today, and they're the same categories.
Okay. That kind of goes to my point. For instance, multifamily, if we're talking about a small apartment that maybe is, the intent is for affordable housing, is there any allowance for that in these categories, these unit types?
That one's yours, Carson.
Oh, well, I guess it's both of ours. I guess they have, I mean, you're right. So a one-bedroom apartment is going to pay the same impact fee as a three-bedroom apartment because it's based on the average pupil generation. Now, through the county's code, you know, the applicant or the developer has a relief method available through an alternative fee calculation. They could always fulfill that fee, and the burden is on them to show how, you know, they're going to generate, you know, fewer children than what's being used in the study.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yeah. So it's been my understanding that multifamily drives more demand for elementary and middle school services, and it seems like it's reversing costing. So if you have a bigger house, you pay more, even though the services are being demanded from some other component. Is that kind of the way this reads?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I agree with that. Actually, single-family generates more school children at the elementary level than multifamily. The single-family currently at the multifamily level has a pupil generation rate of almost .14, and the multifamily has a generation rate of .10.
Based on unit count, not density or square footage that you're using, right?
Yeah. It has nothing to do with density or size.
Right. So I guess my question is, it seems like square footage is somewhat arbitrary. Is this the standard that's used across the state? Does everybody use square footage?
Well, I mean, in our experience, I mean, more and more communities are going to a square footage-based system. I would say that schools have been slower to do that, and it was the school board's preference that we keep the sort of one-size-fits-all category for single-family, townhome duplex, and multifamily. And so it can be argued, and I tend to agree with this, that the proportionality is better under a size-based approach, but this certainly is reasonable and will pass legal muster, if you will.
And so this is kind of my question, is that you set up a set of parameters, and you say, within these parameters, this is the recommendation. And so my question, contrary to what I might be, is are we using the right standards to make the next step? Because then you go from the, say, we've got this parameters that we've been using, so we want to continue to use, and we have done these things, but we have this kind of moving transition. You know, there's different sizes in housing, there's different product being delivered, and we did this in '15, and now it's '17, and I like that. I like that we're reviewing it that often because I think it's fluctuation. I'm of the opinion that we're about to see the peak of this market change in some way, and so that will have some impact. So I guess I just want to be sure that we're using the most appropriate, most defendable. You know, we've got a lot of people that are not using the school system that are paying these taxes, and I just want to make sure that we can look at them and say, yeah, we recommended this because it makes, it's good business sense for the community, and it's also the rights, you know, satisfying the community for what they need.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. DeLezlin, you have a question?
Why didn't manufactured homes go up so much compared to everybody else going down?
Well, according to the data, their pupil generation rate has increased.
But we seem to be in a pretty big retirement community, which you would think wouldn't have any kids. Manufactured houses are very few, I guess, compared to single-family houses.
That speaks to the parameters.
They do have a very, they do have a very low pupil generation rate. I mean, per way of comparison, a single-family house is .316, and a manufactured home is .09.
I guess another question is, these are all new connections to, or new facilities, correct? That's when these impact fees are?
Yes.
And so I guess the question is, to your point, John, where are we building new mobile home facilities? What's the generator for those units? I can't think of.
And obviously, an age-restricted community would be exempt from the school impact fee.
Yeah. Mr. Horgan?
I've had family members living in mobile homes and been in a lot of them. I don't recall, I don't recall ever seeing a child in one, to be honest. Maybe there are, but they'd be pretty rare.
This goes to the parameters. They say, well, this is the generation stat from some database I don't know what they're using. And so I'm a little, I'm just sensitive to what we're using as our premise to say this is the right answer. I'm not saying the calculations are wrong. I'm not saying some of the analysis is not, but we've got a premise here, and when you say, oh, I'm going to spend this much money, and the school budget is one of the more significant components, right? I'd like, if I want to vote for it, I want to be very comfortable that I understand why we're using those parameters versus something else.
Now, is this a flat fee or based on square footage of 1,000 square feet?
No, that was my question. It's the basis, so.
So if you build a, whether you build a single-family 1,200-square-foot house or a?
Small house.
Or a 3,000-square-foot house, you still pay the same impact fee for school, although county-wise, it'd be different.
Correct. That was the clarification we were given. Mr. Bauer?
Couple of different questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
In 2015, we did a tier, right? We started, what, 75? What was, what did we approve before? 75, 90, 100, something like that?
On the school side, the numbers were 50, 75, and 100.
So currently, we're at 75% right now?
Yes, I think that's correct. Yes.
April goes to 100?
Correct.
So the proposal today is to decrease where we're at at 75 to something lower than 75, whatever that number is. Is that correct?
The school board representative is coming up tonight.
And that would be, and that would be expected, given the fact that you now have this bigger credit for the sales tax.
All right. There seems to be some conflicting information. Let's hear from the school board. While you were answering yes, she was shaking her head no, so let's get clarification.
Sandy Ford, Chief Operations Officer. The whole purpose of us redoing the impact fee study was because of our desire to go to 100%. So when we were going to come to ask you to go from 75 to 100 in a more timely speed than next April, it became aware that we needed to redo the impact fee study. So that's this. The intent is to go 100%.
You said it became apparent. What made it apparent?
Much has changed. The sales tax changed, the cost of construction changed. The things that Carson mentioned at the beginning of his presentation are all the things that have changed that forced us to go back and take a look at it from scratch.
Okay, thank you. Any additional? Mr. Rutledge?
Mr. Bauer?
So I'm a little confused that in this proposal, the impact fees are being reduced from what they currently are, but at some point, we're going to go back to 100%? I'm sorry, I'm just not understanding that.
No, I think the new study just replaces the old study, so that's no longer relevant. And the new?
But the 100% number is just simply different than the previous study 100% number.
Correct. It's starting all over, new study, a new effective date, the old one goes away.
Now, this is all on the premise of the sales tax that the voters just approved? The additional revenue for the sales tax?
Yeah.
But is it actually additional revenue? I thought we just renewed what was already there. No?
Carson, you'll probably have to answer that. I think they were.
I didn't hear the last part of the statement.
Did you not hear it, Carson?
No, I didn't hear the last part.
Can you repeat?
Okay. So there was a previous study done in 2015 that we approved 50, 75, 100% impact fee.
Right.
My assumption, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that was done with the sales tax revenue that we had in place at that time, correct?
Right, which sunset, and so the credit wasn't very large.
So you did the study under the premise that the sales tax was going to sunset and not renew?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was getting after.
Yeah. And so to give you a little more context, if you look at the gross capital cost per student seat in the 2015 study compared to 2017, it's greater in 2017. The difference is the credit is also greater. So that explains the reduction in the 100% amount.
For clarification, the previous sales tax, I think it was enacted in, was it 2000 or 2001 it was approved, were the improvements that were a result of that, were they bonded? And essentially, the money that was coming in after the facilities were built, we were paying down the debt, is that accurate? I guess that's a question for the school board.
It's really both, but yes, there was, some of the sales tax was used to pay down bonds from the previous buildings.
My recollection was there were, I think, 15 schools built in a very short period of time, and so the dollars were bonded to pay for those facilities, and that money that was generated for sales tax was to pay down that debt. And I think essentially, we've already seen that the current sales tax is being utilized the same way. I read that the construction of the new schools is being bonded?
Yes, we have bonded.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horgan?
I guess I'm a little bit confused. We went to the citizens and the visitors to Manatee County and asked for more sales tax, yet we're going back and we're saying we're reducing the impact fees at the same Personally, I find a little bit of a fairness issue there, that we're reducing the impact fees on builders and developers, yet we're raising the cost to the citizens.
Can I dovetail on that a little bit?
Mr. Bauer?
And that's part of my initial thinking as well. So the voters approved to do these things with the sales tax, and now the sales tax apparently is being used as credits towards things that impact fees could pay for, whereas the sales tax could be used in different ways that impact fees can't pay for. So we're essentially giving credits to growth, not paying for growth, is what I'm seeing. That's where I'm at with Mr. Horgan as well.
And maybe to also interject, the thought is, there was a And maybe to, to also interject a thought is, there was a, I guess, an update in 2015 between, prior to 2015, 2015, and then what we're looking at now, was, what is the increase, incremental increase, or was there an increase?
In impact fees?
Yes, ma'am.
No, from 2009 until 2015, there was an impact fee moratorium. So we were not, we were not collecting them at all.
I realize that, but what was the, the rates? Comparatively, what were the rates? Was it increased between '09 and, or I'm sorry, was it, were they increased in '15?
That was the rate that you were, that was the rate that was just calculated.
Okay.
So yes, they were. I mean, in answer to your question, yes, they were increased prior to '09 when the moratorium.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'm not a man. I have to respectfully remind the Planning Commission that many of the issues you're talking about here are fiscal policy questions, they're not comprehensive plan questions. They are questions for the Board of County Commissioners. It's a legislative process, so you're free to talk about them. I'm not trying to tell you not to talk about them. But at the end of the day, the Planning Commission's role is to determine whether or not what's proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the board will have to wrestle with the more broader questions of fiscal and economic policy, and I think there'll be a debate about that, because typically, more people show up when these get to the board to talk about those issues and raise them. In terms of why they needed to update the study, when the school impact fee went to the board in, I think, December of 2015 or January of 2016, at that time, Dwayne was serving as the consultant for Tischler-Bice in presenting that to the board, and the question was asked by one of our commissioners, if a sales tax is approved by the voters, what will that do to the school impact fee? And he was quite clear on the record that it will require a revised study. Because when you study impact fees, by statute and by case law, you have to use the best available data, and there are a few things that go into the equation. One is what revenues you have other than impact fees to pay for your infrastructure. Another is the cost of that infrastructure, and then there are various generation rates that can change as development patterns change, which you've talked about a little bit. So it was very clear at that point that if the, the voters approve a sales tax, a new study would be needed, or a revised study would be needed to incorporate those revenues. School boards are under the thumb of the legislature in how they build schools. They can't simply sequester funds and say, we're only going to use this money for these improvements over here that aren't related to growth, and then we'll use impact fees for the, the improvements that are growth-related. They don't get to do that the way that counties and cities can. So once they have revenues, they're required to start programming those revenues, and they're required to be sort of growth-neutral in how they build student stations and where they build them. And so that's why you see this study in front of you today, and they're going to have to revise it to meet the legal standard and take into consideration the availability of those revenues. I think they're now bonding the high school. That's the, and that's a, that's in our capital improvement element. I don't remember the exact number, but it's, it's a big number.
Well, we bond, we bonded $150 million.
Okay.
But it's not just for the high school. The high school is $80 million.
I understand that, but the high school, I thought, was like 90 or so.
Eighty.
Way up there. It's a lot of money. So once you start programming those improvements, you have to take into consideration in your impact fee analysis that you've got revenues available to build them. You don't have a choice. You don't have a choice. You've got to incorporate it into the impact fee study, or you have a legal problem with your impact fee. So it's not as if somebody's saying, oh, let's make it easier on development. That that's not what it's about. It's about having to meet the legal standard to have a study that's defensible, and that's why it's in front of you today.
Mr. Bauer.
Mr. Clegg, is, is there a formula, a legal standard as to how much of the sales tax revenue must be accounted for when determining the impact fee? Is there a percentage?
I can't say that there's a, a stated formula. I think different consultants have different ways of approaching it. As, as with everything else in impact fees, there's more than one way to do it that meets the legal standards. It's become kind of a cottage industry in the, in the consultant world, and there, there are a few ways they can do it. So I would have to, you know, ask the consultant to address that, if you want to explore different ways of, of incorporating that revenue into the analysis. It's a good question.
Sure, Mr. Clegg. I mean, from our perspective, I mean, the, the idea is you're, you're ensuring that new development isn't paying twice, once through the impact fee, and then again through the sales tax or property tax. So from our perspective, let's just hypothetically, let's assume that the, the school board is receiving, you know, $10 million a year in sales tax, but if they're only using $5 million of that for capacity, from our perspective, legally, you only have to give credit for that five, for the $5 million, because the other is being spent on, you know, technology or roof replacements or that sort of thing. In this methodology, we're giving credit for 100% of the sales tax, so we're being, you could say, overly generous. But as Mr. Clegg said, you know, different consultants have different methodologies. In fact, that, that came up with the stakeholder meetings that we had with the homebuilding community. Questions were asked, well, why did you give credit for, you know, sales tax over a 20-year period versus what we did? And my, and our, our perspective is, you know, we're looking at a 10-year horizon, a lot can change in 10 years. This is what the school board has planned for the money. We think this is legally defensible, and even though another consultant firm used a different methodology, when you compared their study to ours, you know, we were actually giving more credit. So again, as, as Mr. Clegg said, it's a cottage industry, everybody has their own techniques, but essentially, we just need to make sure that we're not double-counting money that's being used for capacity.
So, so again, I kind of fall back to the issue of, we have a voter-approved sales tax, basically an extension, renewal. Some money of that sales tax is being accounted for to reduce the impact fees, and all over the paper is the discussion of raising the millage rate to cover some other expenses that the board wants to be able to pay for or put in their budget. So I'm wondering, I guess, if the school board said, we don't have to raise the millage if we're able to use all of the sales tax revenue for XYZ and utilize the impact fees to pay for what impact fees can pay for, is that a good argument? Or is that not a good argument?
I think it's a good argument.
Well, I think with-
Mr. Horgan.
With, Mr. Clegg's point is well-taken.
Yeah, it's a fiscal policy argument. It's not a comp plan argument. It may be a good argument, but it's not necessarily relevant to the decision you're being asked.
This board isn't going to make this decision, but at night, when they're having a real sleepless time, and they're going back and reviewing the Planning Commission video, the county commissioners will understand that this conversation did take place, and will take it into consideration when they make their decision, and they can make this decision.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Ratliff.
Yeah, I, so I, I just, I go back to the premise of all this. So I'm looking at one of the charts that was supplied. It says total impact fees for single-family home dwellings in unincorporated areas. And you can see there's some real, it seems like real thought and decision to allocate a certain amount to the southwest section proposal for 2,200-square-foot homes versus the northeast section. And those deltas are $3,000 or $4,000. And so I think, and this is the question I think we're being asked, does this meet the planning, design, and development expectations that we have, as, as our dictate is, to enhance, change, modify, et cetera? And I don't understand the, where the text comes from here or there, it doesn't really matter. What it says is, I'm going to discount home builders to build in the southwest section versus the northeast section. I don't understand how that analysis is done with the development plans we have. So is there a, is understanding of saying, hey, this is a development area we want to enhance, and we're reducing those fees there? Or is it only about the number of students they generate? Because, because I think that's where I am curious.
This is Dwayne Guthrie again. You're talking about the county fees, and that's not the topic today. The school fees are county-wide, and it has to do with the complexity of the attendance areas, and there's maps in the study that Carson can address later. What you're talking about, the only fee in, for the county that varies geographically are the transportation fees, and they were done based on the specific analysis of the capital improvement plans and growth for each one of the four areas. So there's, that's a whole different methodology, but we're not talking about that today. That's, again, back to the 2015 study.
It would be very difficult to geographically vary the school impact fee, because Florida statutes require us to look at student stations available anywhere in the county for most, in most instances, for concurrency purposes. So it's, it's not something that would be an option, probably.
Thank you. I have an additional question. I think I know the answer too, but I'm asking it just for clarification. The impact fees are to be utilized for capital improvements. That means it's capacity improvements, it's building schools, buying buses. Taxes would be utilized, could be utilized for those, but in this discussion, would primarily be used for operational costs, hiring teachers, hiring other folks. Is that correct? I saw your head shake.
No.
Could you please clarify the, how the-
Yeah, and I, one of the questions that was asked, thanks for asking the question again, because I, I had the urge to clarify, that the millage can be used for operations and for general operating dollars. The sales tax and the impact fees are, can only be used for capital. Now, capital includes building, which is the impact fee part, but capital also includes the maintenance of your infrastructure.
Right.
So, and that is sales tax.
Right, and, and that's essentially what I meant. I might, I might not have stated it clearly, but that's the distinction I would mean. You, you can build the facilities with impact fees, you're still going to have a cost associated because you're adding students to the-
Correct. And that's, that would be millage and other sources of revenue. It is not sales tax or impact fees.
Okay, and I, to Mr. Clegg's point, that was another fiscal question, but let's, let's shift over to the legislative. So are there any questions regarding the consistency with the comprehensive plan? Mr. Bauer.
Ma'am, could you also discuss, I appreciate that clarification, because that's very important. What can the sales tax pay for that the impact fees can't?
Can I do it the other way? Can I insert backwards for you? Impact fees can pay for growth-related activities. So impact fees is going to pay for new student stations in areas where we have been impacted by growth. Sales tax can do that, it can help support that, but sales tax is also going to help pay for our infrastructure and our roof replacements and our maintenance and ongoing maintenance of facilities that exist that are not new. So it's kind of the separation of the new versus the-
Has the school board identified, within this study, roughly how much of the sales tax revenue would be replacing the loss of the impact fees due to the reduction? We're asked, we're being asked to reduce, approve the reduction of the impact fees, so money has to come from somewhere. So has the school board identified, since if we approve this reduction, let's just say $5 million, but we need six, so there's a million-dollar difference. Have we identified, the school board identified, what that difference is and what the sales tax revenue has to make up?
Yes. It's part of the five-year capital planning process. So we have an ongoing capital planning process. So it's, it's a, a constant development. So yes, if, if that becomes necessary, that we don't have the impact fees to completely pay for XYZ, then we do look for other sources of revenue to pay for them.
Correct, but I'm not asking the what ifs. I'm asking, have we identified what is, based off our current projection and our goals of what we need, have we identified this particular number, give or take, a guesstimate or whatever, is what's going to be needed from the sales tax revenue to make up for the loss of impact fees?
Yes, but I don't have those numbers with me, that we have done that type of budgeting analysis.
For, also for clarification, is there actually a reduction in the dollar amount? I know that we have different sources, the impact fee, the taxing, and the one, one cent sales tax, and then the millage. The dollars that are being generated aren't less, are, it's my understanding, there's more, of course, because we added the, the 1%,
It just depends on what our growth is. So, I mean, it's a, it is a, something that's collected based on activity. So as long as the activity continues, yes, there, you're generating the revenue. If the activity, I think there was some reference to, maybe we've peaked out, well, then we will have to respond to that fact that we've maybe peaked out, and we'll have to take a look at the whole budget. It's an ongoing process. It doesn't, it's not fixed.
Okay. All right, I-
I'd like to finish. One more thought.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I know you looked at me earlier. So here's my thought process right now. We're talking about, does it meet the comprehensive plan and so forth? So Policy 10 dash, 10.2.1.2 says, "Manatee County shall ensure that future development pays a proportionate share of the costs of capital facility capacity needed to accommodate new development. This is achieved via impact fees and other legally available and appropriate methods and development conditions." So what I would like a response to is, what if I said, based off the knowledge that sales tax revenue will have to be used to make up for the reduction of impact fees, therefore, we have not ensured that future development pays for a proportionate share of the cost, because there is a, there's a gap of what you're asking for? Therefore, it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan? Is that a viable argument? And if not, why?
I, I don't think so, because the reduction in impact fee is because you've got the money to pay for growth through the sales tax.
Interesting.
All we're doing is reallocating what percentage of the new capacity is paid for through impact fees versus other revenue sources, whether it's your capital outlay millage or the sales tax. From my perspective, there is no gap.
Can I ask one last question?
Mr. Ratliff.
So was the directive to this advisor to show us how to utilize all of the available funds, so that we could describe that and give an allocation and submit it? What was the actual directive to this group when you contracted with them?
Is that, is that a question for me?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, as I think Mr. Clegg mentioned earlier, you know, I was asked the same question at both the school board level and the county commission level about, well, what happens if the sales tax is renewed? And my answer was the same as Mr. Guthrie's, which was, well, you'll have to revisit the methodology. And so our charge as part of this was to, number one, revisit the credits, but at the same time, if you're, if you're redoing the study, you might as well look at everything else. And so we redid the pupil generation rate. Michael Penley from the, from the school board had better clarification on, you know, where you're going to need additional student seats, what those, where those additional students, student seats would be built, whether they'd be additions versus standalone new facilities. We had better information on construction costs. We had better information on the cost of buses. And so basically, it was a comprehensive redo of the study assumptions. And the other thing that was different this time was that we were very adamant that, as part of this, we do outreach with the homebuilding community like, like was done with the county's impact fees. And that was not done as part of the, the previous study, although we recommended it. And so we had two sit-downs with the home builders, as well as a, or two conference calls, to go over the study and get their buy-in and their perspectives. And frankly, it was, it was a productive process. We got some good feedback. We revisited numbers, and it was, it was, it was a give-and-take process.
One last-
Mr. Horgan.
Last point from me. Sort of following on what Mr. Bauer said, if you had all of the impact fees at 100% of what was proposed before, would you not have more sales tax revenue to fix more roofs and install more playgrounds and do that sort of stuff as opposed to? And I see Mr. Clegg is sort of ready to-
Well, the problem I'm having is they've already bonded $150 million worth of school construction off of the sales tax. And the statute says we have to use the best available data. So you can't ignore that. It's 150 million bucks, and there, and it's, it's already bonded to build schools. And so I don't know how I defend in court, well, they could have used it for roofs instead, because what will happen is if somebody's challenging the impact fee, they'll say, well, they didn't. They, they bonded $150 million to build a high school and a bunch of other stuff. So we have to go with what they're actually doing fiscally, not with what- they're actually doing fiscally, not with what we would like them to do. All right? We don't, we don't run the school board over here. We just take the information they give us and we try to get to a legally defensible fee. And it's a considerable amount of money, whether it goes up or down a little bit. I can tell you, it adds up to a lot of money and there are a lot, a lot of lawyers that look at it routinely. So...
As an opportunity.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's not as though we can say, well, you guys should do this with your money and that with your money. We don't get to do that at, at the county. They give us the information and if we can get them a legally defensible fee, we will. But we don't, we don't run their capital improvements program from here, nor could we if we tried.
And I have a question for the school board, maybe to provide some clarification or context. Is the approach that you take the capital program, what's needed, and then find dollars to support that? So, if the sales tax is not available, then that would account for an increase in the impact fees, as opposed to saying, these are the dollars I have. What can I do with them when you're developing the impact fee?
Really both. You can't do one without the other. So, let me maybe help just clarify. We are asking for more than we are currently collecting, because we are not currently collecting at 100%. So, this whole conversation started because we wanted to collect at 100%. And then, as Mr. Clegg said, the, the law says that we have to have the most recent data. Well, things that happened in between there. So, we couldn't just come to you and say, well, we want to collect 100% based on what it really was on the 2015 study. We needed to be able to do it on current data. So, that's how this whole thing got started. We actually will be collecting more impact fees than we are currently collecting right now, because we're only collecting at 75%.
And then, the benefit of collecting more impact fees is it can increase the money being spent on the tax. I mean, they kind of go hand in glove, because it can't be used for operational, those two monies together.
That is used for operational.
Those two monies together are facility improvements or maintenance or...
Yes.
As you described earlier. Okay.
That hope?
I am a little confused, because I thought the, what we saw on the presentation actually was lower fees. Am I missing something?
The total 100% would be lower, but we're not currently collecting at 100%.
If it was.
So, basically, 100% of the new fee will be a higher number than 75% of the current fee.
Yes.
That's where they're changing. They're going from 75 to 100, but the overall numbers have to go down to reflect a different revenue picture.
And when does, when does 100% kick in? And the current?
It's, help me. I think it's 90 days after. The 100% would kick in, in April of 2018, if we did nothing.
But the difficulty is that's based on a study that there, that is probably going to be outdated by that point because of the sales tax and the new, new improvements that are being programmed.
Have we solved the problem?
I missed that, Mr. Clegg. What was that last bit?
The, the sales tax has resulted in their programming and funding improvements that were not funded before, particularly the high school. In 2015, we had a high school in the CIE, but there was no funding source identified for it. It was, I think it was in there by then. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it was the next year we put it in, but it wasn't funded. And now it is, because they have the sales tax and the bonds to pay for it. We can't just ignore that in a, and rely on a study that had a completely different fiscal picture, because we didn't know then that the voters would approve the sales tax and enable them to do that.
So, you're talking about the old study?
Correct. The 2015 study.
So, we needed the new study?
Correct.
So, in 2018, when it was set to go to 100%, that's not an automatic thing. That wasn't just going to happen by itself based off the prior approval? Is that correct, Ben?
It, it was. The ordinance says that it goes to 100% in April of 2018. But it's based on a fee schedule that is, or it's 100% of a fee schedule that comes from a 2015 study that is, that now needs to be updated.
All right. So, are there any questions regarding the consistency with the comprehensive? Could, could staff just clarify, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan in staff's opinion?
Yes. The backup material, the staff report lays out all the specific goals, objections, and policies that it is consistent with, and that is our recommendation that they be approved.
Thank you. So, any, any additional, Mr. Clegg?
Public comment.
Okay.
We must go to public.
All right. Is there anybody in the public who would wish to come forward and make a...
They want to get into this.
Come forward and make a statement regarding this matter? Anybody? Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion. And again, this is a legislative matter, but we're asked to provide a, provide a motion. So, the motion, I think, is found in item number 10 in the staff report. Is there...
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Ron.
Based on the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and findings, finding the Manti County School Impact Fee Study dated May 9, 2017, be consistent with the Manti County Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Land Development Code. The Planning Commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the Manti County Ordinance 17-46, amending the Manti County Code of Ordinances as recommended by staff.
We have a motion by Mr. Ron. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeLezine, second. Is there any discussion on this matter?
I, you know, forgive me, but you know, when we talk about mining and the school board and a few of these other things, I just feel like they ask for our opinion, but it's only if it's this. And I, I get that. But I don't feel like, and it's not because you're not here, but I just don't feel like I understand as clearly as I would like to to give my personal support to it. And so, the, the difficulty I have is, I don't know how this matches up to the plan. The staff says it, and I usually go always with the staff. But, but I don't, I'm not sure I get it. And so, I have a difficult time being affirmative. I may not vote against it, but I just, it just, I'm just not comfortable with the way this, the structure's set up, although that's what they said the standard is. I get that. But I, I got to tell you, I'm really struggling when I see the impact fees go down and we've imposed this tax on ourselves. We've all said we're going to pay more taxes. And then, how the calculation is done by square footage of houses. There's just so many things that just don't make me feel that we've done the best job we could on this. That's my opinion. And I, I have a high respect for the staff and their recommendation. But I got to tell you, it just, and if you don't need my vote, then you won't care how I vote. But just, just not a good clarifying question for me to say yes or no. That, that's the struggle I have.
Thank you. Mr. Horgan.
I think I, I agree. It does, I, I, what I think we have done, though, is we have had a conversation that will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners when they make the decision that, that they will make and they have the ability to make political decisions that we don't. But I think that, you know, the, I've always learned through years that if you don't take your attorney's advice, you get yourself in potentially real trouble. And if you do take your attorney's advice, odds are his errors and omissions insurance is going to take care of it.
You can blame the attorney then. But I do want to make it clear, I'm not advising the Planning Commission which way to vote on this. That is your decision. I'm trying to make sure the record's clear, but it is up to you all to, yeah. I don't tell people how to vote, never have, never will. So, it's...
Thank you. Mr. Bauer?
I was just going to point out, I mean, I know the gentleman on the phone, sorry if I forget your name, but disagreed with my assessment in terms of that particular section of the comp plan. But under that premise that he disagreed with, if the voters came back, if somehow on, on the ballot got another sales tax increase of two cents, and somehow the voters approved for it, then that would further reduce somehow the impact fees for growth. Therefore, the voters are taking on more responsibility, again, for the growth. That's under his premise right now, I do believe, for disagreeing with my assessment of that particular comp plan. I'll even note, I'm kind of in the same boat with Ms. Rutledge in terms of how these calculations are done. I'm comfortable with that. It could be, I could be completely wrong and maybe they're even paying more than they should. I don't even know exactly, but I'm certain that by the time it gets to the board, I think they would want and get those answers as well. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any other discussion? It's definitely a complicated matter, and it's, it's essentially a tax. It's money out of pocket. It affects everybody who's a Manatee County taxpayer. So, I could understand why, why we all have a significant entrance, interest in the fiscal element of it. It affects each of us. So, it is a, it is an important matter, but today, we're not going to solve that. Today, we're here to determine if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the information from staff is that it is. So, we'll call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye, passes four to two. I'm sorry, five to two. Thank you. All right. We're going to go back to the regular agenda now. And I believe we are at the minutes. Okay. Mr. Mr. Horgan would like to take five minutes. So, it's, it's about 10 o'clock right now. We'll come back at 10:05. Thank you.
Does that mean we have nothing for presentation today?
Back to the minutes.
Well, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.